All right, good evening, everyone. It is Monday, March 24th. It is 6:48 PM. This is a public hearing before the Town Council regarding proposed amendments to the Town Code, Chapter 470, Article I, Section 5. Will everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The following Town Council members are present in chambers. Persko Kohut, Mauer, Lapellis, Formicella, O'Rourke, Wales. Founding Town Council members are absent. Reed and Duvva. Moving on to Communications. ISI Communication Items A and B being incorporated into the minutes of this special meeting. Moving on to Item 4. Public hearing regarding the proposed amendments to Town of Monroe Code, Chapter 470, Article I, Section 5. This public hearing is being conducted pursuant to Town Charter, Chapter 2, Section 6, and for the purpose of receiving input from the public regarding the proposal. Before I throw it over to members of the public, I would ask, this was proposed by our First Electman, if he wanted to say anything regarding the proposed changes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I didn't write a speech of any kind, but I, this goes back to one of the visits I had in the senior center, and some of you were there, and you expressed the needs of increasing that threshold, as well as housing was a concern. Those are the two major concerns that I think, I see you shaking your head, so you agree with, those were big scenarios that the group was talking to me about. So, the first initiative was to do some work with P&amp;Z and see if we can allow more senior housing in town, which we have accomplished. We're going to allow 250 more units now. Hopefully, we get a builder who's creative and doesn't build seven, eight hundred thousand dollar houses, because that's not going to help, but at least there's an opportunity to do it. When you look at some of these bigger projects like Turkey Roost, if that had been on the table, maybe that would have been available. So, maybe somebody will revisit some of those projects. That's number one. And then the second thing, of course, was the threshold. So, Justin, myself, and Justin Feldman, the tax assessor who's here in support of this, started talking not long after that, but like I've said to Subenay, who's here tonight, the floods kind of got in the way, and it took four months off our lives. So, I apologize that it happened this late. I intended on doing this early, but I think this is a good start to give a little bit of relief in, with the revale year and the challenges that we're all facing. I think this'll, this'll relieve some pressure. So, that being said, I'll kick it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. All right, I'll open up to the floor. Any member of the public that's here in Town Council Chambers, just please come up to the microphone, name an address for the record. Anyone who wants to participate.
Steve Kirsch, 35, Applegate Lane. I'm in favor of this change. In fact, I made the motion in front of the Board of Finance, and we approved that unanimously, so I hope that I could just have that on the record as well. The Finance supports this as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other member of the public that would like to participate? We'll go, Ryan, and then Mr. Lenniker.
I'm Subenay, 25, Bartley. And we were very pleased to be able to work with the First Electman and Tax Assessor to put together these improvements to the threshold in terms of income. We all agree it's a good start, and it's in keeping with other towns. It's, you know, it's modest compared to some other towns, but it's somewhere in the middle with regard to others. So, I just wanted to let the First Electman and the Council know that we're very appreciative, and we thank you for your work towards this, and we fully support it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lenniker.
Good evening, members of the Town Council. My name is Joel Lenniker. I reside at 70 Hunting Town Road. I want to voice my support of your proposed ordinance. I think it's a fantastic first start, and I really emphasize "first start." You've got the momentum going, but now I'd like to see it go further. And how would I like to see this go further? I think you need to be, I'd like to see you be leaders for the entire state of Connecticut and for the senior citizens in each of those communities. And a couple of ideas, and I'm not going to try to say that they follow state law, whatever, I'm just talking about concept at this point in time. Why not start at 68? Freeze taxes on senior citizens that have residences in the Town of Monroe that have been here at least 20 years plus. Since the Board of Ed consumes most of our budget, and since most of those people, including myself now, probably have contributed quite a bit to education, and I do believe someone educated me, so I got to help educate other people, but if you've been here 35 years and you've put no children through the school system, then why not for all seniors? The Board of Ed portion of that would be waived for seniors. Now, what's the benefit of having seniors here? Is we don't consume a lot of pressure on the schools. We probably don't use a lot of the roads, but we do use the roads. The parks, which would be great if we could have considered a splash pad instead of a pool, because number one, you don't have to have white guards. You have someone to supervise, but you don't. You're not dependent on closing that facility down when kids go back to school. It also provides really great access for wheelchair and handicap people. If we're looking forward, I think we need to consider what services are we doing? And I might charge the commission, the commission to the agent, I think it is? Is that the commission? I don't know the official title. Then perhaps just say, what services do we provide to someone that's at 68, 72, 82? Because I think it really does help us to have these people in town, because they volunteer for committees. They've worked on a lot of committees. They have money to donate some of them, not all. And obviously, there's two categories or more. People that are really strapped for the funds could really use that, and it's really a nice thing to have your community a mix of balance. Right now, my feeling is, and I'm pretty strong in this, I would love to do a survey and ask, as soon as parents have their last kid graduate from NASTIC, how many of them hang around to do anything in this community? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public that would like to participate that's in Town Council Chambers? No? Is there any member of the, oh, you can come down.
I've been here since the mid-'70s. I would prefer to see the tax freeze at whatever age or how many years of living here. I don't know how possible that is, but to me, it makes more sense than a graduated discount, if you will, on your taxes, because as we know, our taxes keep going up. So, we're not really saving that much overall. We're just going to continue paying higher taxes as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public that's in Town Council Chambers, please come down.
Hi. My name is Leslie Gosselin. I live in 51 Karen Drive in Monroe, and I am the Vice Chair. Thank you. Starting the ball rolling here. We've been talking in our commission for several years.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Oh, okay.
It doesn't amplify. It's just for recording.
Is this fair?
No, it's for recording purposes, not amplification.
I've been on the commission for several years now, and this is the first time we've been here and trying to get something done. I agree with the gentleman that just spoke and the lady that just spoke. I think if we freeze the taxes for people who, like myself, I've lived here 40 years, I'll probably never benefit from, you know, the graduated taxes for people whose incomes are of a certain income. I think we could do both. I don't know dynamics and how we could do that, but it would be great. I like the idea of having seniors in our town, because how that they don't bother the school or anything like that. But it's very scary to me to be at a certain age now, lived here for 40 years. I love Monroe. I don't want to move out of Monroe, and I don't know where I would go, but my taxes have doubled, if not tripled, since I first moved here. And I think we need to take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public that would like to participate that's in Town Council Chambers? Hearing none? Is there any member of the public that would like to participate that's here virtually via their phone? Please remember, unmute yourself. If you've called in on your phone, it's *6 to unmute yourself. If you are here via web browser or an application, you need to de-select the red microphone. Someone has unmuted themselves.
Yes, that would be me.
Go ahead, name an address, please.
Tom Rose, 110 Hattertown Road.
Go ahead.
And mirroring the previous speaker, my wife and I have also lived in Monroe for 40 years, and we are experiencing the same hardships, and we really don't want to move. And we are one of the fortunate ones. I'm retired from Sikorsky Aircraft and Engineering, and I have a pension, and I can't imagine, I cannot imagine being retired in this town without having a significant amount of income. That being said, we do appreciate this meeting from you folks and from Terry and his efforts. However, it is interesting that, I was looking at the correlating taxes per town of the state of Connecticut. Out of 169 communities, Monroe is approximately the 16th highest in all of the state. And I just wonder, A, why? And then, when you look at Shelton, their taxes are consistently much lower, and the argument being, well, they have a lot of industry. And then the question is, well, why does Shelton have the industry, whereas Monroe cannot generate that? There's a lot of scope from this meeting, but I do appreciate the efforts for recognizing the plight of the senior citizens, and that's pretty much what I have to say at this time. Thanks for the opportunity. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public that's here via phone or via their computer that would like to participate during this public hearing? I think that's our same person. And I don't hear anyone else. All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for your comments. At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:02 PM, and we're going to quickly move to our Town Council meeting. So, thank you very much for everyone. Back to you, then.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Might I suggest that we reorganize our actual meeting and take this item up early so that those people who came to see it don't have to wait through the entire meeting to...
Sure. All right. That's fine. Okay. So, yeah, me too. I wanted to...
I have to be here the entire time. If you'd like to stay, you're more than welcome.
Terry, do we need to open up a new meeting?
No, it seems to be connected to the same meeting.
Okay, that's fine. All right. So, it is 7:03 PM. I'm calling to order the regular meeting of the Town Council. It is March 24th, 7:03 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The following Town Council members are present in chambers. Persko Kohut, Mauer, Lapellis, Formicella, O'Rourke, Wales. Founding Town Council members present digitally. Reed, the following Town Council members absent. Duvva. All right. So, we have eight members of Town Council present. Those previous, I'll just say for the record, this is a regular meeting of Town Council. We have already completed the Pledge of Allegiance. Founding Town Council members are present in chambers. Persko Kohut, Mauer, Lapellis, Formicella, O'Rourke, and Wales. Founding Town Council members present digitally. Reed, Founding Town Council members absent. Duvva. Moving on, I'm going to ask the consent calendar be present, passed as presented. If there's no objection, hearing no objections, consent calendars passed as presented. ISI Communication Items A through G being incorporated into the minutes of our meeting. Moving on to public participation, is there any member of the public that would like to participate this evening during a regular Town Meeting, Town Council participation? Please come forward, name an address.
Steve Kirsch, 35, Applegate Lane. Tonight, you've got a Pepper Street Project Executive Session, and two comments. Number one, just so you all have a section memory, this body approved this project in October of 2019. After the town, head goes in on in November of 2014, and that gives you an idea how long this has been going on. And to your executive session itself, I'd be very interested for you all to publish a list of what are the color countries, but things are remaining to be done that might be an issue. We haven't been, anytime to be updated in a while. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public that would like to participate during a regular Town Council meeting? No? That's it for public participation. We're moving on to our appointments this evening. We have one appointment.
It's Lily Chen. I have her name. Here is Thelma Chen.
I move the Town Council approved Resolution 25-040, resolve that Monroe Town Council hereby approves the First Electman's appointment of Thelma Chen to the Lake Shore Authority for a term ending November 8th, 2025. Is there a second? Second by Jason Mauer. Discussion. Thelma Chen lives, has lived in Monroe for the past 24 years. Stealing my agenda. She holds a Masters of Life Sciences and PhD in Anatomy, Cell, and Molecular Biology. She's currently employed by MannKind Corporation as Vice President of Intellectual Property. Here she participates in many different teams and committees, including research and development of the company's products, managing partnerships along with other endeavors. Through her volunteer work, Thelma is currently a board member of the CT STEM Foundation, where she is an active member leading the Science and Research Committee. She is a member of the Drexel University College of Medicine Alumni Board, serving on the Finance Committee. Among her other volunteer programs, she is Secretary of the GSLC Church Council and den mother to VoiceGout PAC 162. Thelma is a strong candidate for this position. Her goals are to ensure that Monroe is properly represented in the Lake Shore Authority by attending meetings diligently and reporting back to Town on ongoing matters. This appointment fills the vacancy of Mark Sasko. Is there any other discussion on this appointment? Hearing none? All those in favor of adopting Resolution 25-040, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Hearing none. Passes 8 to 0. There was a request earlier that I take up New Business Item B, Resolution 25-042. Yes.
Can you just introduce, I believe Thelma is here, so we can bring her up to swear her in if you want.
Sure, absolutely. Please come down.
You've got to clap after she's sworn in. I'm nuts.
Right up there.
Yeah. Thanks, Alba. Do you solemnly swear, solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that you will faithfully discharge according to law your duties as the Lake Shore Authority to the best of your abilities to help you, God, or upon penalty of perjury? Congratulations. All the stuff that you need. And also, I need you to fill this out. I put your name here. If you have a pen with you, I'll give you one so you can sign it. I have a pen. Okay, great. Thank you. For the, the, what's it called? The change in the charter? I thought you had that slightly paper. A change in the charter, what we're going to go about right now.
So, moving on to New Business Item B, Resolution 25-042. Madam Vice Chair, is there a motion?
Motion. I make a motion to adopt Resolution 25-042. That Chapter 470, Article I, Section 470-5E2 of the Elderly and Permanently Disabled Tax Reforms is hereby amended, and be it further resolved that Chapter 470, Article I, is hereby replaced by adoption of new Article I, Select Section 470-5E2 of the Elderly and Permanently Disabled Tax Reforms as presented, and that its full text be incorporated into the minutes of the meeting.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Donaldan Wales. Mr. First Electman, discussion?
Just to speak about what I said a little before, I'm very happy that this council, you know, supported this moving over to Board of Finance, well, nice, we're going over to Board of Finance. I'm thankful to the Board of Finance for seeing this vision, and I do recognize the increase in the tax base. The revale this year was really difficult on homeowners because of the shift in the tax burden from commercial to the residential. And I know many of you have said to me, you live in the town for 40, 50, you know, I've said many times, my family's been here for three centuries, and, you know, I've seen the town change over the last 50 years. I can only tell that 54, but I only remember it when I was four years old. That was my first memory, and a lot has changed and has developed, and things have gotten much more expensive. So, we looked at what other towns were doing and what we could do to at least. It was a tough year to roll this out, but I knew it was an important year, and we're happy to do it. So, there's always more work to be done. That's just about any area of this office, but it makes me very happy to be bringing this to you, especially at this time. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Other discussion on this?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Kohut.
Thank you. I would just like to bring to the attention of the council and others in the audience, and I'd like to just express my gratitude to Subenay and the Commission on the work and the legwork that they did in bringing all of the information necessary to get this proposal before us. So, I just want to say thank you to them. To the public.
Thank you. Councilmember Mauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I mentioned at the last meeting when we first discussed this, as Leslie said, this has been a long time coming. I remember us having these discussions when I was on the Commission on Aging, and I'm happy to see it finally coming to fruition. Also, like I said at that last meeting, I agree that this is a first step. I'd like to see, the two things I'd like to see, and one I brought up last meeting, and we talked about as a good idea for a second step after we see what the tax burden, how the tax burden is affected by this on our grant list. But now that we've shifted the actual dollar amounts for eligibility, shifting the minimum amounts upwards, so to mirror the rise in the property taxes after this revale, I think that would be after a year or two of seeing how this plays out. That would be a logical second step. I also think it would behoove the town to take up the income limits on a more regular basis, whether we actually set a review time in the future of a period of time that the income limits are reviewed every however many years, whether it be five years, whether it be less than that. I think that would be a smart move as well. That being said, I'm really happy to see this step being taken, and I'm happy to be a part of it, even in the small part of just giving my vote aye.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion on this item? Councilmember O'Rourke.
I'd just like to extend my thanks and appreciation to the First Electman for shepherding this proposal through the process. As you, as First Electman had mentioned earlier, you know, it's vitally important that we try to do our best to maintain our senior population here in Monroe and to assist and help as much as we can. Mr. First Electman, I know this year was extremely challenging to roll this program out, but I appreciate the leadership that you've shown in this effort.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion on this item?
Usually don't want to speak twice, but I, I'm glad that you brought that up, Kathy, because Sue, you did motivate this. We were, we were working on this, Justin and I, the tax assessor, early on when I first got in the office, and with the floods and things, I told you, it just derailed us for a good four months, but you did reignite it in the sense that, okay, this is something we need to do. So, thank you. Thank you for taking that initiative, and I apologize for not thanking you right off the get-go, but, you know, you start getting to talking, and sometimes that just happens. And also to our town attorney, because it's an ordinance, and he did a lot of his due diligence to make this happen. Took a lot of work, so just want to thank him and Justin Feldman. There's, it's a group effort. None of these things happen by one person. It's always a group of people, so. And I'm happy that you're all here tonight, too, so thank you. That's it.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of adopting Resolution 25-042, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none? Passes 8 to 0. We'll now move to, we'll now move on to Item A. We'll just get all our motions out of the way tonight. Madam Vice Chair.
Resolution 25-041. Resolve that Terrence P. Rooney, First Electman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the Lockton Service Agreement and any associated documents binding between Lockton with the Services Agreement.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. There's a motion to adopt Resolution 25-041. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jason Mauer. Mr. First Electman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our Human Resources Director, Craig Kirsch, has provided our new service agreement with Lockton. This agreement will be effective for three years, retroactively to July 1st, 2024, with a fixed annual fee of $20,000. This fee is unchanged from previous years. Lockton has provided brokerage and employee benefit services to the Town of Monroe for many years as the preferred professional services provider, therefore, an exception to the purchasing policy under 4.7 is appropriate. This agreement has been reviewed by our town attorney, who's provided his agreement revisions and his memo of opinion, which are attached. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion on this item? Hearing none? All those in favor of adopting Resolution 25-041, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Passes 8 to 0. We'll now move back to our action items this evening. Madam Vice Chair, Town Council Committee on Finance, Education, Health, and Public Safety Matters.
We have not had a meeting in a while.
Thank you very much. Town Council Command, Plan, Zoning, Public Works, and Park and Recreation Matters. Councilmember O'Rourke.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have not met since our last meeting.
Thank you very much. Item C, Town Council Committee on Legislative and Administrative Matters. Councilmember Reed. Kevin, you're muted. All right.
No, 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 I'm here. I thought, I thought it would come off mute. Sorry. I just gave my whole performance.
I just gave my whole performance. Oh, God, I gotta do it again. I have to grace you all with it. All right. We did meet tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We talked about three items. First was number thirty-eight, the Performing Artist Engagement Agreements. The second was thirty-nine, which we discussed, the block safety order agreement. And third was number forty-one, the Lockton Service Agreement. And that was it. Thank you very much for bearing with my technical difficulties.
That's okay. We were having some ourselves. Item D, Strategic Planning Committee Meeting. We haven't met since our last town council meeting. I need to reach out to the Historic District Committee, or excuse me, the Monroe Historic Society. Again, very similar names, all great people, but to continue our discussions regarding the Bearsley House, hopefully we will be able to have a meeting in April with them. Additionally, since our last town council meeting, we did have a meeting of the Facilities Ad-Hoc Group with the Board of Education, in which there are a number of updates that were given regarding the narrowing of the options. However, there was significant public participation at our last meeting from parents, mostly from, I would say, Monroe Elementary, but others throughout the district about some concerns and misinformation that may have been released to the community regarding future plans. And so I think that really spoke to the need of continuing to get public input on the planning of any type of remodeling or of any of the school buildings and going forward with the plan by the Board of Education and addressing their space needs that they have expressed. So I believe it's the intent of Chairman Ferris to continue to receive public input about those decisions and long-term planning. I don't believe it's the Ad-Hoc Committee's intent to move forward with the recommendation at this time to go forward with applying for bonding this year. But we will continue to receive more information as that goes forward. I think there's still a lot of due diligence to be done before the town and its people, you know, put forward a bonding resolution. So that's all I had. We do have a meeting on Thursday, I believe, Steve. Yeah. Thursday, we'll have another meeting, and I'm sure we'll have a lot more meetings after that. Again, yeah. Good. So there'll be more public participation this week as well. And I expect to, maybe not as big of a group, but similar concerns to be expressed at our next meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I just, as our liaison, I wanted to, you know, I did have a number of people reach out to me after the last ad hoc meeting and expressed probably some of the similar concerns that were expressed in public participation. But I did want to bring, the major gist of it was from the large number of people who reached out to me, every single one was opposed to the idea of not having Monroe Elementary as a community school anymore and having it as a secondary use or anything like that. A few of the people raised the concern of if it was to be utilized as the alternative school as well as pre-K as well. Were these things that we necessarily wanted to have housed within the same building for a variety of reasons? And just wanted to bring that to your attention as our liaison that people were reaching out. I did instruct them to attend meetings, send communications to the Ad-Hoc Committee and the Board of Ed. But I wanted to let you know that those comments did come into me.
Great. Thank you, Jason. Those are, if you could summarize what the comments were, those were all the comments. So what, again, I think there's a lot of work, I think, that the Board of Education, the committee, needs to continue doing before there can be any forward motion with any significant financial decisions. And again, there are community concerns, like you've expressed, about the long-term planning of the Board of Education facilities. You know, some of that is probably Board of Education decision-related as opposed to the facilities. But, I mean, policy-wise, but those concerns were expressed and certain every member of the board heard those concerns. But yeah, I would say a lot more information needs to be brought to the table before there were any significant decisions needed that have to be made.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And that's it for strategic planning. Moving on to item E, Open Space Preservation Acquisition Committee. Councilmember O'Rourke.
Mr. Chairman, we have not since our last meeting.
Thank you. And item F, our First Electman's update.
First Electman Rooney. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really quick, in operations, the maintenance, springtime operations have begun, such as park cleanup, road work, and road cleaning, and removing debris from the end of Steve Kirsch's road. Emergency Services Update, Fire Operations. The fire chiefs meant to discuss operations. I attended at Stephanie. As the departments are working together better than ever before, they need volunteers. So if anybody knows anybody willing to volunteer, they're definitely in need of volunteers. Capital Projects, Community Center Site, CCS's continuing fit-up for Parks and Recreation Department move. And the Animal Control, we at DOAG visited the Animal Control Shelter and addressed what needed to be done for final approval. Community Update, went to the Bridgeport St. Patrick State Parade. It's always an honor to represent Monroe. The annual parade with other municipal leaders, there was no shortage of Monroe attendees, and our presence there was extremely well-received. Center for Family Justice, it was a proud moment to present and represent Monroe in giving the check for ten thousand in the center from the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year budget. This will assist in our mission as they have battled state funding cuts for several years. The center helps over a hundred families annually in Monroe, and we're happy to support them. On a nice note, we did a proclamation for American Ninja Warrior two-time winner Joe Morowski yesterday at the Town Green. On Sunday, we celebrated and honored Joe Morowski for his extraordinary accomplishments in Ninja Sports, including two-time American Ninja Warrior Champion, as well as four-time USA Member and two-time OCR World Championship Hundred Meter Winner. Joe is also a husband, father, and freelance meteorologist who balances profession with community achievements. Monroe is fortunate to have him in our community. It was also his birthday. And anyway, thank you, Joe, for being a great member of the community and your amazing accomplishments. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair? Go ahead.
Thank you. May I ask the First Electman, just for a little clarification on what was found with the Animal Control Shelter?
He gave a list to Public Works, the Assistant Director of Public Works, who's going to be working on it. We, it's no secret that you and I had a conversation about what was going on. I did give you a heads up as to some of the concerns prior when you approached me here. Some of the concerns that we spoke about as far as the cages and things and the distance. That was a pre-approved plan that they followed, but it doesn't really meet some of the DOAG standards. So there's that. There's a drain issue. But the drain is going to go back in twenty twenty-nine, so the regulation right now doesn't fit, but they're going to be changing the regulation back to what we have now, so we have a discussion there. And that's it. There's a couple more things, but they have a list. So they're going to make sure they clean it up before we go to final inspection. I mean, this is construction sometimes.
I get it. I'm just curious as to what they found. All right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right. That's all for action items tonight. We have two matters of unfinished business this evening. However, I believe only one of those we will need an update on. So I'm going to move to enter executive session, inviting the First Electman and the Town Attorney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I believe we have to state the specific reason for...
Oh, yeah, I'm getting there.
Okay.
It's in discussion. All right. So we're going to move into executive session regarding item A, Pepper Street Pending Litigation. Any other discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor of entering executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Passes eight to zero. All right. Welcome back, everyone. It is eight oh eight P M. There were no votes taken during executive session. The only matter that was discussed is the Pepper Street Reconstruction Project litigation under unfinished business. I'm going to make a motion under unfinished business, Pepper Street Reconstruction Project. This will be Resolution twenty-five dash zero four three. I move to authorize the Town Attorney and the First Electman to settle pending litigation regarding the Pepper Street Reconstruction Project within the parameters set forth during the executive session on March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Further, any settlement agreement must be approved by the Town Attorney and First Electman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Union Lapellus. This was discussed during executive sessions. Is there any other further discussion regarding this item? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Passes eight to zero. Moving on to second public participation. Is there any member of the public that would like to participate? Seeing none in chambers. There is no second public participation this evening, and I'm going to adjourn this meeting at eight oh nine P M. Thank you, everyone.